Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. McClain.
Here.
Mr. Blanchard.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Striebe.
Here.
Okay, so we've got a chance to look at the agenda. See any need for additions or corrections to that agenda? We do have an addendum, by the way. Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move, second.
Roll call, please. I'm sorry, who seconded it? Charlie.
Charlie.
Everybody might have to raise hands.
We have to do hand raises.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
Mr. McClain?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, we have a chance to look over the minutes from the last board meeting. And does anyone have any additions or corrections to the last board meeting's minutes? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of August 11th of 2020.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McClain?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to yell, too. You have to blow your.
Special commendations, item five, we have a motion to approve the following donations. $130 from Waterford United Methodist Church for school supplies and $350 from Gorman Rupp pumps to the high school for school programs and activities.
Did Gorman Rupp specify a program that those should be going to?
He just said designated to the high school.
I need a motion to approve the donations, please.
So move.
Second. Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. McClain?
Yes.
Okay, treasurer's report and consent agenda. Heather, it's up to you.
Okay. Expenses did exceed revenue in August by $331,670. This was mainly due to one-time large expenditures. Some of the large expenditures were durasell for the K-12 paving, Edmonton the online school, AEP for the electricity, school employees annual surcharge. The SERS surcharges when employees that make under $33,000 a year, they, there's an annual surcharge up to 2% of their annual salary that is then fed back to the districts to help supplement the retirement and insurance so the SERS can keep their portion of really retirement and 10% where SERS is up to 14%. So they do an annual surcharge and they did raise the rate or the salary. About five years ago, it was down to $27,000 and this year it's at $33,000. So really, anyone under the $33,000 mark is at the surcharge limit, which is just about everybody that works for the school district. Our Lexia learning platform, Renaissance learning platform, and Bryce nursery for the mulch are down at the K-12 going. Those were the large expenditures. We did get the remainder of our property tax. So when we got the final property taxes and our delinquency rate actually dropped to 3%. So we're right now, we're at a collection rate of, it's almost at 97%, which is fantastic given the culture that we're living in at the moment. Also submitting amended to the certificate of resources and appropriations. We received a small grant amount of $6,000. It's part of Title I. These monies will be for career opportunities. So we're one of the, well, we're the only school in Knox County that has Project Lead the Way. So these monies will be going towards computers for that program. And the grant itself is called expanding opportunities. So it's based on your Title I funding and free reduced lunches. So our amount was $6,000. That is everything for the month of August. August, even though it was busy, it went by really quickly. It's early, we're at September 8th already. I also, we were able to get everyone logged into the new software. Everyone was able to view their pay stubs for July 2nd. And even the new staff, they have been able to log in and they have done some requisitions themselves. So everyone is logged in. There's been some glitches along the way, but we're slowly working through that as we knew there would be with new software. And auditors will be in, they say by the end of the month, but now they're kind of pushing that back. It could be at the beginning of October. But I don't perceive any, really any issues for the audit for FY '20. And that is everything.
Does anyone have any questions for Heather around finances?
Heather, when you report on the expenses exceeded revenue in August, that $331,000 number, is that inclusive of all your funds or is that just general funds?
That's all funds.
So the $108,000 would have come out of something other than?
Right, the $108,000 that was for the paving, that came out of permanent improvement.
Okay. And the Edmonton platform?
And the Edmonton came out of COVID grants, which they call it, now it's ESER, which at the beginning it was CARES money, now they changed it to ESER.
Yeah. And then your SERS report, that's not our certificated staff?
That's classified only. So it'd be all your custodians, coach, bus drivers, secretaries, and aides.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report and consent agenda, please.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. McClain?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Striebe?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to item eight, superintendent's report, and item nine, superintendent consent agenda.
Good evening. I would first like to share that we've had a great start to the school year. We received a lot of positive comments about the videos that we posted online for students and parents. We also had a lot of positive comments about our opening day. I would also like to share that last week, the high school mailed out the hybrid Scarlet and Gray schedules, in case we go into the hybrid schedule. Scarlet is Monday and Wednesday, Gray would be Tuesday and Thursday. And then the elementary is sending those hybrid schedules home today. So we're being very proactive in preparing for any changes that may be coming. I would also like to welcome John Massara. He's our new special education testing coordinator and he is on our agenda tonight. I also would like to share that the elementary had a welcome back luncheon last week and it was full of healthy choices. And Mr. Caputo and I had the wonderful opportunity of cooking hamburgers and hot dogs for the elementary students and staff. I've been reaching out to all the staff with some type of positivity, just trying to make a positive connection. Last week, Robin McClain received a positivity award. So those are starting to happen again with our staff being back. I would also like to share that the fire department did a great job last week when we had some smoke in our middle school. That part should have come in today or at the latest tomorrow, but the expectation was that it would come in today and hopefully that would be fixed this evening if possible. Our one-to-one Chromebook initiative, the middle school and high school, all one-to-one Chromebooks for the middle school and high school have been received. We have passed a device out to all students and will soon begin to exchange older devices with students that received those last year. Elementary fifth grade received their Chromebooks last week and we will be continuing with fourth grade this week and then third grade. K-2 Chromebooks ordered in July are still estimated to be delivered in mid-December. All students in the Online Digital Academy have also received their Chromebook if they requested one. Starting today, we will be replacing and installing 18 network switches and 85 access points. Equipment and services will purchase through the E-Rate program with an estimated savings to the district of $157,000. We also received a broadband Ohio connectivity grant. We requested $45,000 and we were funded at 60% of our request, which was about $27,000. That money will be used for external access points, for outdoor Wi-Fi for parking lots and for at-home internet for students without internet. So we are in the process of working with Verizon and creating an account. One glitch to that grant, it's only through December 30th, so we will be paying some additional funds for those hotspots beyond the December timeframe because we are planning on a six-month contract. So that should be around $3,000. So that will be on the board agenda for next month. Mr. Brown and Mr. Gary, they have worked with the community to get additional bleachers for families and students, allowing us to double our seating capacity. Our new seating plan was approved by the Knox County Health Department. If it is approved by the Ohio Health Department, we will roll out the plan to players, students, and their families. So we're waiting on a state to approve that plan to allow more people beyond that 15% capacity. Our goal is to get as many family members, students, and community members into the stadium as possible. On the agenda, we have a couple items. The Fredericktown Elementary and the Freedom Center for Instruction and Curriculum to prevent school-based prevention programs. We also are approving some new policies tonight and some administrative guidelines. And that pretty much concludes my superintendent report for tonight.
Anyone have any questions for Susan around the superintendent report or consent agenda? Okay, hearing none.
Hold up.
Okay.
Motion to change the KMAC ticket prices for all sports. It's been reduced from seven to five.
Yes.
Was that a KMAC recommendation?
That was a KMAC recommendation and all KMAC schools agreed to that reduction that was due to a safety issue where they just wanted not to have to give change back.
Okay. That's good.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve consent agenda, please.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Striebe?
Yes.
Mr. McClain?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item 10, which is our committee reports. Mrs. Miller, are you up first for legislative liaison?
I'm gonna just go ahead and apologize upfront because it's long.
Okay.
The interim director of health, Lance D. Hines, signed an executive order on September 3rd requiring that K-12 schools notify parents, guardians, and the public of possible positive COVID-19 cases within a school building. But that doesn't just, in that order, require the building. It also requires, you know, everybody in the system. It doesn't matter if it's a student, a worker. If there's a positive COVID-19 case that is reported, we have to notify the parents. I'll talk more about that in a little bit. But the General Assembly activity, House Bill 606, was sent to Governor Dewine for his approval. I don't know if he will be approving it, but the bill basically prohibits a civil action for damages for injury, death, or loss to person or property against businesses, the state, local governments, and schools, among others, if the case is due to exposure to COVID-19. The bill, the amended bill, which was actually the one that the House approved and the Senate did as well. It extends the duration of immunity from December 31, 2020 to December 30, 2021. So kind of interesting. And it also removed the bill's emergency clause. The House voted to concur with the Senate amendment, House Bill 272, and this basically prohibits a public official from changing the time, place, or manner of conducting an election. The bill is going to be sent to the governor. I am waiting with bated breath to see what he does with that. Senate Education Committee, they had a first hearing on Senate Bill 358. You should have gotten an email from OSBA about Senate Bill 358. It's sponsored by Senator Federer and Senator Manning, which changes education law for 2020, 2021 to provide districts with continued flexibility and relief during this COVID pandemic. I am a person who supports that bill. And basically what it says is the provisions allow for teachers and principal evaluations to be completed without the use of student growth measures. It provides flexibility for students should they be unable to take an end-of-course exam by allowing them to meet graduation requirements through the use of final course grades, kind of like we did last year. It eliminates the state-required assessments with the exception of diagnostic assessments and requires ODE to seek a waiver from the federal government around those required assessments. Prohibits ODE from issuing state report cards for the 2020, 2021, and 21, 22 school years and establishes a safe harbor from report card-related penalties for those school years. It gives districts local control in making decisions regarding promotion to the fourth grade and free of the third grade reading guarantee mandates. Provides local control in determining if a student is on track to graduate. Some of the things that were spoken to at the testimony is additional provisions related to ed choice, the extension of the waiver authority to ODE. Some of the public schools are still being held as an ed choice school, having to give waivers to their students and they haven't addressed anything. So it's still back to 2017. So that's the issue, that's the main issue. The extension of flexibility to hold virtual board meetings under the Ohio Open Meetings Act, elimination of the new territory transfer law, we talked about that before, and eliminate the academic distress commissions. Those have not been eliminated for House Bill 70 years back. So that's essentially Senate Bill 358. It'll be interesting to see what happens there. If you have a particular issue that you feel needs to be addressed that isn't in the current legislation, feel free to contact folks and make your voice heard. I'm just gonna drop down to the Senate Health, Human Services, and Medicaid Committee. This is, the committee accepted a substitute version of and passed Senate Bill 311, which prohibits the governor or any executive agency from promoting or limiting in-person high school graduations, rescinds the April 30th stay-at-home order, and limits all orders issued by the state director of health to 14 days, including a school closure order unless approved by the Joint Committee on Agency Rule Review, which is JCAR. The revision version now prohibits the Ohio Department of Health from issuing a general mandatory statewide or regional quarantine and isolation or isolation order that applies to and is enforced against individuals who have not been either directly exposed to or medically diagnosed with the disease that is the subject of the order. It also allows the General Assembly to adopt a concurrent resolution to rescind certain Ohio Department of Health orders or rules for preventing the spread of contagious or infectious diseases. The language regarding in-person high school graduations was removed from the bill. So you have a strong opinion about those executive orders. Senate Bill 311 is the bill that you would want to speak to, to your legislative representatives. The Senate Judiciary Committee held its fifth hearing on Senate Bill 16, which requires public schools to instruct students in proper interactions with peace officers during traffic stops and other encounters. Just want you to know that. The State Board of Education, I don't know what happened with the special ed thing and the parent signature for change of placement. I have not heard about that, I don't know if you have. I know a lot of us pushed back on that. The State Board unanimously passed a resolution at a special ed meeting to allow ODE programs to receive state-funded childcare, okay? For the time when they are caring for students who are doing schoolwork online. So it's childcare programs. Dollars will be redirected if they're doing schoolwork online. The resolution allows non-licensed programs to apply for temporary pandemic school-age childcare licenses and funding follows. Okay? Now this is where it gets kind of interesting. Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos has also informed state superintendents that we should not anticipate that federal waivers from standardized test administration will be granted by her office for this school year. She directs states to administer summative assessments consistent with the requirements under the law. And I'm not happy about that at all. I don't know who we worked through there to get our voices heard. I don't know whether we go through our, I would say our congressional representatives at the federal level and the senators at the federal level to express our concern about that. I don't think it's fair to do that to teachers, I don't think it's fair to do it to kids. I'm not sure even what they would be measuring at this point, particularly since we still don't know what we don't know about what's going to be happening even yet this school year. That's the bad news. The good news is, USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, extended the summer meal program that allows us to continue serving free meals to all children through December 31st, '21. So, do you want to read more about the reporting and notification of COVID-19? I've got it right here, but I don't want to talk about it anymore. So that is my report.
You know, when you said in the beginning that the parents would have to be notified if a student, but where do they draw the line with HIPAA violations on that?
Okay, so I had that same question. And I called about this because I'm just like, you can't believe, here's what we have to do. We have to maintain a reporting system that has very specific criteria, what you report. We have to identify a district COVID-19 coordinator. We have to provide information to the local health departments. And then every Tuesday, they report it to the state health department. Where it goes from there, I'm assuming, is the CDC. Notification requirements. It must be sent within 24 hours of the district becoming aware of the positive test. And these notifications, it's written notification of a positive test or case involving a person who is a student, teacher, staff member, or coach. And I'm assuming if there's coaching staff, right, volunteers, shall be sent to parents or guardians of all students who share a classroom space or have participated in a school activity during the COVID infectious period. Of that person that tested positive, all parents or guardians of students at the school building, notifying them of a positive test result. This, to me, is a school-wide notification. It's not like when, back in the old days when I was doing things, if so-and-so got head lice in the classroom, we sent those head lice letters out. What if they didn't know who it was? But we could only send it to the classroom. We didn't have to send it to the whole school. That's not how I'm reading this. And then you have to send it to the health department. There are notification templates on coronavirus.ohio.gov. Schools are encouraged, but not required, to use this website. And then every Tuesday, the health departments will report to ODE their newly collected numbers.
But there's nothing in there about HIPAA?
Not a thing. But, you know, the lice letters didn't violate HIPAA either. No, it wasn't. I'm still working.
Okay, any other questions for Mrs. Miller? All right, so B is the finance committee. We did meet on August 12th. And don't blame anybody for highlights. We kind of just went over the ESER grant and...
We went over the ESER and really curriculum. That was the big topic of what it was going to cost per student because elementary is charged or billed differently than middle school and high school. Middle school and high school's flat fee is $9,700 for both of them, that's combined, where elementary is a cost per student. So the elementary at that time, total for elementary came to $41,850. It will be more than that because at that time, it was only, we only had like 90-some, I think it was 97 kids enrolled for elementary, where that has jumped considerably since the August 12th date that we met. But I have not received an invoice yet from Edmonton for the other students. And students have to be enrolled for a nine-week period. Is that correct?
A nine-week for elementary semester for six months.
Yes. And then we also talked about online textbooks. That will be an issue as well. Because everything right now, we just really have one set of textbooks for each classroom. So we were costing out what online textbooks would be as well. And the price for that was close to $40,000 for the online textbooks. And that was the majority of our conversation for that hour.
We did, we talked about a couple of projects. We had the paving project. Anything else, Charlie, please?
Thankful for the grants that they take away and then they give a little bit more in other ways. But the grants are becoming more restricting as what we can spend it on. And they're giving the timelines now that just about every grant has to be spent, not just encumbered, but totally expended out by December 30th. So they're getting, they're giving more, but they're also making it very restrictive of what we can spend it on.
Okay. Any questions, anyone about the finance committee? Anyone? We may not have the answer to this. Okay, Mr. Blanchard, cars can wreck.
Needing more oil in the hills, so.
Okay. Dr. Hayward, community developments?
Due to the evacuation, I was only there for a short amount of time, but during that time, we discussed the 501(c)(3) conversion that's been submitted to the IRS. They said it should take about 180 days. Fredericktown now is going to be absorbed into the Fredericktown Community Development Foundation. And we talked about some proposals to update to vials and procedures and changing the date for membership. And then I have to leave.
Okay, very good. Career center, Mr. McClain, are you gonna put to Mr. Lavin?
I'm a little bit getting put on the spot.
Don't have a lot to update you on. We've been in session since August 17th and the hybrid format, splitting it into ANPM Labs, which is essentially junior, senior. And it's been going pretty well so far.
All right, very good. We had administrative reports from, in our packets. So the administrators are obviously not here tonight. Okay, business advisory council, Tom Charlie?
Well, we did a Zoom meeting and guest speaker slash topic, I butcher his last name, but it was Matt Backwith. He was the vice president of sales and business development of Dawson Employment Services and we spent about an hour and a half talking about the living wage. And it was just pretty much open discussion. Once he laid out a few things, everybody chimed in. in and gave their thoughts on employees and how much weight they put on the wage versus the other benefits, and it was quite an interesting conversation. And some were even, not just wages and benefits, but had a lot to do with culture, do you like people, are you willing to work for a little less if you like the job, do you like going to your place to work? So just a lot of discussions around that. He quoted some statistics that I did write down here because they were gonna give me the information and I've not gotten yet, so I've got to send her an email and ask her what happened there, that they were talking about the income levels and how apparently the gap, according to him, the gap is getting wider and wider between the upper and lower income bracket, and more going to the lower than going to the higher. And that's kind of adjusted to the whole conversation, we didn't really talk about anything else other than just the living wage and what everybody thought about it.
Okay. Any questions for Charlie or Tom? All right, Policy. Patty and Susan and I did meet with Rick, and in the board packets tonight are several of those policy changes, and you all had a chance to look them over, and as you noticed quickly, Title IX is a ginormous document with a lot of intricacies to it. Patty, you want to add anything else about policy meeting?
I just have a question with the Title IX policy, Susan. How do we get that communicated to the people who need to know about the changes?
So a couple of things we've done so far in our last board meeting, we identified the coordinators.
Right.
As well as the investigators and decision-makers. We've also posted that in all of our buildings. Those people, we also posted our training on the district website. And the next step will, well, I should say, all of the administrators have been trained. That includes Matt and Brent and myself and Adam and others in the process of being trained. And then as soon as Level Sports comes out with a module, then we will train, every single staff member must be trained.
Okay, okay. Because this is a hefty change.
Yes, it's huge.
Yeah, that was the only question I had.
Okay, anybody have any questions around policy? Okay, brings us to FBA, Mrs. Snyder. Okay, Mrs. Striebe, I think from Oopsie tonight.
No, nothing.
Nothing?
Other than it was a great start.
Good, great start. Five, five. Okay. Title eleven, Public Participation. We have one person that's gonna be doing public participation, which will be Jennifer Vostick.
Hi, many of you know me, Jennifer Vostick, but I live on Mulberry Street, I'm here for the town, I have a fifth-grade son named Joe Nicks, and I want to take the opportunity to thank the school board and the superintendent, as well as all of the teachers and aides for making the start of this school year phenomenal. I, in my own personal experience, my son being able to go to school five days a week is absolutely amazing. One of the teachers said they had been away from school and without students for over a hundred and some days, and I had been working from home since March seventeenth, and the governor gave his order on March thirteenth. So my son and I have had a lot of quality bonding time. And while I appreciate that time immensely, I also appreciate the fact that our district made the decisions that did the continue school for five days a week. I know other districts in the county were like, oh, maybe we'll do hybrid or maybe, and I appreciate the fact that we did not fall into that model and that we're giving this an opportunity. I even asked some other parents their thoughts on if it means I'm going back to school, and overwhelmingly, their students' response is that they were happy to be back to school because one child said wordwork, I don't know what that is, but they were super happy about their wordwork. Most of the kids said because they get to see their friends. Some, one child said because they get away from their parents. Some kids like being outside, recess, science. One child was very excited to be at school because they had a new teacher, so they liked that as well. Obviously, not all kids are, like, overwhelmingly positive. A couple were, like, sick and mad because they had to wear masks. But in at least talking with my son, I don't hear, oh my gosh, Mom, I had to wear a mask today, and, no, I hear, oh, we did this, or we did that. My child even chooses to wear a mask at recess. Do you want to know why my child wears a mask at recess? Because he wants to play sports, and if they want to play basketball and be close together on the basketball court, they have to choose to wear their mask. So my child is voluntarily choosing to wear a face mask at recess when he could choose not to, so that he can play with his friends and do normal school routine things. I know these changes have been hard. I know I sent Dr. Hayward a recent article that was published by the center I work for, a white paper, talking about how the pandemic has affected students from birth through elementary school, talking about how parents and students were feeling stuck at home, how they've experienced lots of negative consequences, and different things being with the way we've all felt since the time of the pandemic. So, and lots of kids lost lots of their summer activities that they could probably do, sports and everything else. So it was really great that the district made the decision to bring students back to school full-time. And I know I heard from other parents who were happy that they were able to give their children the opposite opportunity and allow them to continue to be learners online. Some parents reported that their student is thriving in that environment, being away from all those social and peer pressures that they have experienced from school in the past. And lots of, and several parents reported liking having the opportunity to change up to a certain point where they could decide, is this what's gonna work for me or is this not? One parent said one of her children is staying home, the other child is now going back to school starting this week, because the sixth grader was fine doing independent work, the second grader, mom was like, I'm trying to work from home, and helped my second grader, they need to be in function where they can get their attention. So I just wanted to stand up here tonight to say thank you. I know you've heard a lot of other things over the course of the summer, but I just wanted to acknowledge that we and several other parents in the district are very appreciative of the choices that you've made, so thank you very much. And a special shout-out to our teachers and aides, we totally appreciate the way you are making learning engaging and fun for those kids in the classroom and not making it all about, oh my gosh, I have to wear a silly mask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item twelve, an action on FBA agreements that was heard on August eleventh. We have two options here. Option A is after reviewing all of the information presented by FBA on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty, in support of its agreements, the board denies the agreements for their recent step four. The superintendent's step three response and authorizes the board president to address new issues raised by FBA at the board level and to notify the FBA president of this action or option B. After reviewing all of the information presented by FBA on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty, in support of its agreements, the board grants the agreements and authorizes the board president to notify the FBA president of this action. Do we have any questions around option A or B? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to adopt either A or B.
I move to adopt motion A. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Striebe.
Yes.
Okay, so the grievance is denied. And that brings us to adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Striebe.
Yes.
Very. Thank you all, and still have plenty of time to enjoy a lovely evening out there.
We don't, we don't think it's going to be long.
Oh, my God. What's your name? Oh, I'm sorry, I just sent you. Oh, thank you. And I...